Welcome to everyone, everyone listening in to tonight's City of Saginaw Council meeting. The call to order. Because this is our first virtual meeting conducted online as we follow our governor's emergency declaration and social distancing orders, I ask everyone to be patient and understanding as we work through the process. It is new to some of us, as it is, it is as new to some of us as it is to some of you, but I am confident it will work out fine. We will be dispensing with the pledge and the prayer tonight. And Madam Clerk, we would ask that you conduct roll at this time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please put your mics on by the way.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, there'll be some rules that I ask everyone to follow as we proceed. They include, please keep your microphone muted until it's time for you to speak. If you wish to speak, I would ask that you say, excuse me, give me your name, and then, and then ask that, say that you'd like to speak. You'll be recognized by me. If more than one person asks to be recognized, I will attempt to recognize you in appropriate order. Be careful not to have any background noise or other media on while we're, while you're unmuted. If you get disconnected, just go back to the invitation and check, click the link and you'll come back in. And I want to remind everyone, this is a public meeting, it's live, and we would ask the audience to, well, the audience isn't likely to have a problem with us, but everyone should be respectful and just refrain from anything that might be inappropriate. With those details covered, Madam Clerk, you have some announcements.
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor. I'd like everyone to be aware that the recycling and spring yard waste collection has resumed today, and it will be on your regular trash collection day. Also, bulk collection service is suspended until further notice. These are the bulk large items that are not contained in a bag or a can. The city's compost site and convenience station is also closed until further notice. Bill payments can be made online or by using the city's Dropbox, which is located in the parking lot at the back of City Hall. Please be sure to enclose your payment in a sealed envelope. City Council's next regular meeting via teleconference is scheduled for April 20th, next Monday, at 6:30 PM. And city updates are posted on the city's website at www.saginaw-mi.com, on the city's Facebook page, and on SGTV Channel 191. And Mayor, that takes us to public input, which we do not have anyone signed up tonight. Therefore, our next order of business is the remarks of council.
Thank you. So today, we start with Councilmember Forbes, and I want to remind every member of the council that there is a three-minute limit, and that will be timed by our clerk, so Ms. Forbes.
I'm thankful to spend some time with you, even if it's not in person. We are certainly facing a difficult time, but I'm confident that we can limit the impact of this pandemic by taking warnings. Please.
You are fading in and out a little bit, can you just try and be a little careful?
Okay. Please stay home unless you absolutely have to go to work, go out for groceries, and please wash your hands often, please take these warnings really seriously. It was hard for me not to spend Easter with my parents and my family and friends, but it is really important that we take these, these warnings seriously so that we can protect them. If you feel like you're overdoing it, you're probably doing it perfectly. That's just the nature of this pandemic that we're dealing with. Please, let me also remind you that if you are in need of anything, any resources of any utility assistance, food resources, help finding anything else that you might need during this time, please feel free to call 211 from any phone, or text your zip code to TXD211, or look up 211 Northeast Michigan, and look up their data.
Okay, you froze, Councilwoman Forbes, I'm not sure what happened. She took her mic off, so I think we'll have to proceed to Councilmember Williams.
All right, good evening. I too, I regret, of course, that we can't be together, but we're here like this, so I would like to take a moment to thank all of the frontline workers, and of course, we've seen all of the commercials and all of the great videos for frontline workers, so I won't name everyone, but I definitely would like to point out kudos to those that are in the mental health profession, and that are there helping people with mental health issues, and anyone that are through this time. Because it is, I think it's very important for us to, if we need to talk to someone, to be able to have someone to talk to, still be able to do the things that we're accustomed to within the boundaries of the stay-at-home order. I think it's definitely, although we have these new rules in place, I think the best thing we can do is to use our common sense. The rules are here to keep us safe, but first and foremost, use your common sense on top of the rules and orders that are in place. The gatherings, we definitely need to stop those throughout the city, and I hope that they do stop immediately, so we can stop this spread and get back to some type of normal life in what, what we were used to. And I pray everyone stays healthy and safe, so.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Oystash.
Okay, good, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Like you said, it is our first virtual meeting, and I think we're doing a great job. With that, I want to give out a lot of thanks to, there's a lot of people that have pulled this together tonight for us, and they've been putting in a lot of other countless hours just to keep City Hall running with limited staff, so thanks to the IT staff, thanks to all the, the other staff at City Hall for making this happen for us. As we've been talking about COVID-19, I do want to, special thanks to our police force. I know right now they're being taxed too, there's been a lot of calls coming in, as like Councilman Williams just mentioned, there's been a lot of gatherings still, and so there's been a lot of calls coming in on that. And so just want to thank them, thank our firefighters, thank all of our frontline, and also thanks to all of the hospital workers that are out there working in hospitals and in different facilities, you're on the frontline, and if you go down Washington Avenue right now, there's a big sign out there, you know, Heroes Work Here, and that's at St. Mary's, and even at the dialysis center, so thank you to everybody out, that is out there doing that for us. So, we've been talking about stay home and save lives, and we did a couple of videos here from the city for washing your hands and just our social distancing, we cannot express how much, and that is really important. And just before the meeting here and throughout the day, I've been kind of, I'm always a numbers guy, so I'm always watching the numbers, especially in the state of Michigan. Now, if you go to the website, there's some good information there on this, yeah, we did come down a little bit, and now, now we're back up again, and even as of today, we had 25.6,000 people confirmed cases, we are now at like 1,602 deaths, which is absolutely sad, I feel bad for all the people who have lost anybody. And if you look at these numbers, it's, this is like in one month, so like February, beginning of March, we had our first confirmed cases here in Michigan. As a nation, I've also did a little research on that as well, and even when we had swine flu and H1N1, back at that time, we had, oh gosh, that was from August of 2009 till April of 2010, and within eight months, we had like 12,000 people that passed away, and right now, if you look at the nation as a whole, we are somewhere around 23. So, the council and myself are all telling you this is really serious, please, please pay attention, just be safe. I know it's hard, it's hard for me to sit at home, I've only been out of the house to leave for groceries in the last couple of weeks, maybe a couple times, but we're finding things to do around here, and we've gotten a lot of yard work done. We've been doing projects, painting, just enjoying time together, and reading, I've actually, I'm such a busy person, but I've actually gotten some movies in lately, so that was a good thing. So, just folks, and there's a, we're just, this, we're just concerned for you, and we're trying to just let you know that. And also, there's been a lot of people, even online, and we've been trying to help out people, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Oystash.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Balls. Before, Michael, before you come on, I should mention to the audience, you are not on video, just audio.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A welcome to 2020. My son, it's the same with everybody else that commented on this terrible disease that happened to our country. You know, it's a terrible thing, man, but we do got to get through it, and I'm sure we will. You guys can't see me, but I do have my TV on, so I do see you all. I don't have a lot to say, but I do want the city manager to take a look at a couple of things for me. I was near the fairgrounds on Carter Street yesterday, and there was two pit bulls running around, a gray one and a white one. I took pictures of them, and I followed the dogs around the corner, and I stopped on near Ray Street, and a lady came out her house, and she saw the two dogs, they were back behind her house, in the neighbor's house. And I told her to call the police, because I called the police myself and told them that the dogs are out, and they said, get somebody out if they can, they reported, I called 911. She called 911, and the 911 person asked her, was she sick? And she told him, yes, that she was sick, she, she, she had contacted the disease, she was sick, and she had quarantine herself for a while, but she says she's on, she's going back to work. But I thought it was, it wasn't proper for that 911 person to ask her if she was sick just by her calling to report the dog. I think the badge number was 819, I think, because she called back and asked them, and told them they was pretty rude. So I appreciate if you can take a, take a look at that, and to see if you can find those dogs, just in the, they was near, they walked from there, and they went back to the, the new houses over there near the fairgrounds, and from there, it seemed like they were headed towards the Birch Park area over there. So I don't know if they got, got those dogs or not, but I think we got to take a look at them, they're pretty big, pretty big sized dogs. Another complaint I got over here on, on near Cora Street in my neighborhood, back behind that park, there's a house over here, and it has so much junk in the front yard and backyard, it's, it's just unbelievable. So maybe we can get the people to come out and take a look at that too. But other than that, I don't have much to say, just want to say everybody be safe, and follow the rules, and we all get through this. Thank you.
Councilmember Balls, next up is Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I realize many events in the city of Saginaw have been canceled recently, I wanted to comment on one event that did take place in our community. Last Thursday, our county commissioners held a virtual meeting, much like we're having, and they voted on the location of the animal control and care facility for Saginaw County, and they, by a six to five majority, elected to try and purchase a site out on Bay Road, rather than locate it somewhere in the city of Saginaw. I can only say what a vast disappointment this was to myself and some of our other council members, but not just to our city council. Our Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce, Veronica Horn, spoke very eloquently about reasons to put this in the city, and I can only say that the county board of commissioners' majority voted against all the support in the community to have in the city and their own strategic plan, which would have, if they followed it, practically mandated that a site within the city of Saginaw be found. So I consider this a failure on their part to exercise good judgment, and I can only hope that they may have an opportunity to reconsider this in the future. The other thing I wanted to comment on is our city staff, from the top down, is doing everything they can to make the city work as much as normal as possible. As the mayor mentioned, our departments are all working, water, sewer, streets are clean, trees are getting cut down that are dangerous, I'm sure with these high winds we've had today, we're going to have some call-outs on that, and that will be taken care of. Police and fires operating as normally as they can, and as other council members have mentioned, operating safely is our highest priority right now. On a personal note, we don't have a lot of opportunity as a city council to weigh in on this, most of the emergency orders are coming down from the state level, we also have a county emergency order, but I want to say that I hope to be able to work very soon on the main goal of getting our business community and our public life back to as close to normal as we all think of it, that our small business owners in Saginaw, and I've talked to a number of them, are ready to get back to work. They understand the significance of having been shut down, but it's time to get back to work.
Thank you, Councilmember Millen. Next, we have Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say thank you, and I don't feel like thank you is enough to express the gratitude that myself, probably most of our council members, and as well as the residents of the city of Saginaw, have for our city staff, for all that you've done, to our city manager, and to Jeff for coordinating all of the technology and getting us to be able to connect, just want to say thank you. I want to piggyback on some of the council members' comments about, you've seen signs around town that say, Heroes Work Here, and that is very true, so thank you to all the frontline, our public safety, and all, all of the other workers that are out there still as essential workers, but I want to mention that heroes also live here, because some of these workers are here in the city of Saginaw and putting their lives on the line every day, but also, this is a hard time, because a lot of our friends and people we know in the community, whether you're leaders, just citizens, coworkers, they're being affected by this. I've personally lost a very good friend of mine and a family member to this virus, so I just want to send my prayers and wishes to everybody in the city of Saginaw, and know that we are Saginaw Strong, and we are going to come back, and we're going to get through this together. In addition, I just want to also say that I was very disappointed when the decision from the commissioners, but I want to thank our county commissioners who backed us and was on the frontline saying, let's do this the right way the whole time. So Commissioner Matthews, Kraft, O'Neill, Ruth, and Webster, thank you for stepping up, thank you for letting your voice be heard, and then also to the rest of the council, thank you for those who wrote letters, showed up at meetings, we truly appreciate that. Lastly, I just want to say, our local businesses are still open, so please patronize them, they are doing curbside and takeout, so we all have to eat, and maybe sometimes you're sick of cooking at home, because that's the only choice you have right now, but it's not the only choice, you can patronize our local businesses here in the city of Saginaw, and I hope that you do, and I do want to say thank you to Jamie Forbes, Councilwoman Forbes, for what you did to coordinate some gift card purchases, but also to all of the organizations in the city of Saginaw and in the county that are doing things and stepping up, it really true, truly shows that the love, the heart, and the commitment to making our community better and come together as one is happening, so I want to just thank everybody, and prayers and best wishes to everyone, stay home and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Scherzer. Next will be Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I'd like to piggyback on everything that has been said, yes, we need to stay at home. If you have younger children, now is the time to teach them to wash their hands. Keep in mind, they are saying that the young people are not, if they get the virus, they may not show the symptoms, so they may very well be carriers and not even know that they're carriers, because they're outside playing, and so I'm encouraging everybody to stay home. I'd like to do a shout-out to all of our healthcare workers, our police, and everyone has been pulling everything together. Saginaw is on the rise. Our numbers, I looked at them today, and I was listening to the governor's speech at 3:00, the numbers are trying to stabilize, but we're not there yet, we're not there yet. For all of the people who have lost loved ones, colleagues, my heart goes out to you, prayers go up from my family to your family, and I just want anybody to keep in mind, can we please, please, check on our elders? If you have some elders, just check on them to see if they need anything. I've got some in my neighborhood, and some that I take care of, and I try to take good care of them, because they are our future, and they are the high-risk factors, and we don't want them out in, in the weather, we don't want them out, and I'm sort of glad it's getting cool now, because when it gets cold, we don't have to worry about people moving around. Then you're back again on, on my colleagues when they say, stay at home, it's the best thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, next, we have Councilmember Bench.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, it is great to hear everyone's voice. I don't want to repeat everything everybody's said, but I do definitely want to thank everyone in our healthcare field, in law enforcement, in the fire departments, all of the essential services that have to continue to be provided while the rest of us are safe at home, hopefully. I want to thank everybody who was out there working, whether it's part-time minimum wage, or whether you're, you know, providing a major service to someone that you, you know, can't avoid going in and out of the office for, but I definitely want to thank everyone who can't, who doesn't have the privilege of staying at home, for continuing to go out there and do what they need to do to keep the world moving while, while we're all safe. I want to reiterate that I think everybody on council is taking this very seriously, and that we hope our citizens are staying safe and taking this seriously, and that even if you're staying healthy and at home, this is not easy, and we know that people are scared and struggling and uncertain about, you know, how this is all going to unfold and, and, you know, what the future will, will bring, but if we continue to follow the rules and abide by these restrictions, even if they don't necessarily make sense all the time, they do make sense, they are there for a good reason. Any rush to reopen and regather with the public is going to cause another round of outbreaks, and all of the improvements that the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned that we're, we're potentially going to be seeing soon will be undone, and you can't bring people back to life, but you can make profits again, and you can figure out, you know, how to pay your bills again, and things will eventually get back to some sort of normal, and this won't go on forever, but if we take it seriously and we continue to put each other first, and you know, and put each other's well-being in front of our own, in some senses, we'll get through this a lot faster, and we'll get through it, you know, a lot better, so I just hope everyone stays safe, and I hope everyone as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Bench. My, in my, in my comments, I don't wish to repeat everything, but I will reiterate what everyone has said before me. The council colleagues have expressed sentiments that are very, very important, that is, respect and honor of all of those, those workers who are both from the city, from the health departments, the hospitals, everyone out there who is serving the needs of the public during this critical time, we, we definitely have to honor and respect those folks for everything they're doing for us. For us to do that honor and respect, it's our job to not let this epidemic get any worse than it is. That means, as has been said, there's a reason for social isolation, we need to do that, we need to keep ourselves at home, stay safe, stay in place, unless it's a necessary travel, otherwise, you risk doing exactly what could happen of extending this emergency for months into the summer and beyond if it continues to not be corralled by efforts of our public safety people to stop the spread, and that depends on us, on us doing what we've been asked to do. Our police officers, hospital workers, firemen, all of them have done an awful lot, but let's not undo it. I also want to comment on the animal shelter decision, I believe it was the wrong decision as well for many reasons, certainly it was not a fiscally responsible decision in my opinion. I do want to thank, there's one more person who did in fact support the city in looking for a city site, and that was our former council member, Amos O'Neill, who did vote for, he voted against the township site, and it was in favor of a city site. I, I don't want to characterize that vote, but I certainly was disappointed by it, it went against both economic, practical, environmental, and a multiple other issues that I think were critical, and it fails now to serve the city residents adequately, so we will see how that plays out. I have been receiving emails questioning the governor's emergency restrictions on using motorized boats for fishing, and I've also been receiving ones about the prohibition of lawn service. I have today talked to the governor's office, and urged that they look at that closer to see if there's some perhaps way to address some of those concerns and still adhere to social distancing, hopefully that will happen, but if not, it's three more weeks, two and a half weeks, and hopefully, if we honor the restrictions, we will get out of this quickly. Thank you, that is all I have to say. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. Just a few items that I wanted to mention tonight. The city of Saginaw has once again received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, and I believe that's over a dozen in a row, I know it's been since probably 2007, but we all know that that is given by the GFOA, and cities must adhere to specific guidelines and develop a policy document, a financial plan, and an operations guide, and a communications device through the use of the budget, and be rated proficient in all categories, so congratulations to Yolanda Jones and her staff again for earning that distinction. And the only other comment I have is to thank all of the city workers, which a number of you did, but I wanted to go in a little bit of detail with that. All of the department heads have worked very hard to make sure that the city can continue to run well, efficiently, and provide a good level of service, they've all made changes, and we all see the police department and the fire department quite, quite frequently, and Chief Ruth and Chief Van Lu have done an excellent job of making adjustments there to try to keep our employees as safe as possible, given the jobs that they have with the city. I would mention a few things about our departments, the police department, Saginaw Police Department is the largest police department in Saginaw County, so we do provide support to other communities, and I think we have mutual aid agreements with everyone around us to provide that backup support. Fire Department is also the largest fire department in Saginaw County, and we're a full-time fire department, so we provide that backup to a number of facilities and communities in Saginaw County as well, so that really states the importance of public safety departments in the city and So that really states the importance of, uh, public safety departments in the city and, and the support that they provide to the rest of the county. But we also have to think about our water treatment facility. Uh, Saginaw Water Treatment provides, uh, safe and healthy drinking water to most of Saginaw County and parts of Bay County as well. And that facility has a full staff, uh, working, as does the wastewater treatment plant, which provides, uh, wastewater treatment to a number of communities in Saginaw County as well. Now, some things that we might not think about it are also in, uh, City Hall here. We have, uh, people working in the income tax and treasury and accounts payable and payroll. Uh, we have, um, services in the clerk's office for mail. We still have to get the budget done. We're trying to complete the budget, um, by our mandated deadlines, which are quickly approaching. And, uh, public services are all working as well. We do have some, uh, services, as you know, that, uh, aren't, uh, working right now or are, um, not fully staffed, so you could see some delays in those, but we did start a few of them up. The clerk mentioned recycling and, uh, yard waste pickup. And finally, the last one I want to mention is our city attorney has really been working overtime on, uh, getting information to us on all, all of the executive orders in a very timely manner because these are things that we have to address, uh, with some immediacy. So thanks to all of our staff and I think everyone's been doing a great job. And I also mentioned, as a few of you have, um, our technical services department is operating with about a staff of two right now. And that is, uh, Jeff, the director and the assistant director. And, um, they're keeping everything running, our most vital services there to keep the water plant running and, uh, the rest of the city servers. So, uh, really a big thanks to all of our staff. And that concludes the management update.
Thank you, Manager Morales. Uh, next, uh, Madam Clerk.
We are now at the consent agenda.
I would, uh, ask if there are any exceptions to the, well, first I want to say that the, I want to, I want to say that the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV one ninety-one. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk at this time? Any exceptions? Last time, any exceptions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Excuse me, I got one.
Okay. Who, who's talking?
Fifteen. Michael Ball.
Hi, Michael. Go ahead then.
Fifteen, I just want to ask the nation of fifteen.
All right.
An exception to fifteen, Mayor.
Yes. Are there any other exceptions at this time? Anybody else? All right, hearing, hearing none, we would ask for
This is John. I will move the consent agenda.
All right, with one exception, that's fifteen. Is that correct?
Yes, with the exception of fifteen.
All right, we have a second as well. Madam Clerk, um, should we take a roll call?
Uh, here, Mayor, who was the second?
I believe that was
Amy.
Amy, thank you.
Yes, all right. If you'll proceed, uh, Madam Clerk.
Did you want to take a vote?
I would take a vote. I would ask just for a roll call, just, it's hard to really get, uh, a vote otherwise, but just a
Well, if anyone says nay, we'll hear that. Then we'll, then we have to do a roll call.
All right, that, that's true. That will work. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of fifteen?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any opposed? Remember to unmute your mic if there are, you are. Hearing none, uh, the motion is carried. Madam Clerk.
Okay, item fifteen is approve the contract with J.R. Heineman and Sons Incorporated for one hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars for the traffic building repairs for the engineering section, right-of-way division. And that was Councilmember Balls.
Councilmember Balls.
Yeah, I'd like some estimation on that. What, what are they, what are they going to be doing?
Mr. Manager?
It's stated in the justification, the work that they're doing, so I will just refer back to that. Um, the work on this project includes repairs to the north wall and the flat roof and replacement of gutters and downspouts and doors. The project also requires lead paint abatement. Wall and roof are in poor condition and currently leak during a rain event. Um, we received the one bid from J.R. Heineman and Sons Incorporated.
Are we going to get any other bids on that?
They are the only firm that did bid on the project. It was an open bidding process as we always do and we only received the single bid.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Balls, is there a motion on number fifteen then?
Yeah, I'll, um, make a motion that we approve fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second by Brenda.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any opposed? Last time. All right, thank you. It is carried. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next order of business is boards, commission, and committee reports.
Are there any boards, commissions, or committee reports to be made today? Anybody? Anybody?
Yes, Councilman Millen.
Well, proceed, Mr. Councilmember Millen.
Uh, yes, uh, since our last meeting, we had a airport commission, uh, MBS Airport Commission meeting. And we are planning, our next meeting is this week. And that will be a combination in-person and video meeting like we're having. Uh, our last meeting, trying to think what our main event was. Uh, we're going to be approving, uh, design contract for a taxiway repaving. And, uh, in general, the Corona, uh, COVID virus environment has not slowed our workload up there. We are doing a number of contract adjustments due to reduced revenue. As everyone knows, there's not as many airline flights. So, uh, a lot of our work is adjusting our budget at the airport right now. And that will continue, I'm sure, until, uh, some of the airline activity comes back close to normal.
Okay, anybody else with the report? Anybody else? I, I do have a Starz report. We had a similar, um, virtual meeting, uh, last week. And, uh, the main issue was covering, uh, the, the suspension of, uh, direct route, the main routes, uh, by, uh, by our director as a result of people not paying attention to the social distancing, uh, restrictions that have been in place. Um, there are, uh, the ride wellness is continuing. Um, and, uh, as is the, uh, the, uh, call. I forget the name of the rider, I understand, Councilmember.
Lift.
Forbes. Help, help me out here.
Lift and
Right. So that one is continuing. Um, the buses are, or the, the equipment is being sterilized after, sanitized after each ride. They are being extremely careful with any, uh, to avoid any and all exposure. They're limiting the rides to, uh, families from one home. Uh, they're just being very careful. But, uh, the, the main routes simply had to be canceled unfortunately. There is some funding that hopefully will be coming from the federal government as a result of the CARES program. We have not yet had any discussion on that, but hopefully that will be coming as well. Anybo, anybody else with any other reports? Anybody else? All right.
Mayor, your next order of business is resolutions. We do have one this evening. And it's the appointment of Travis Hare as trustee and Josh Hoffman as alternate trustee to the Saginaw Area Stormwater Authority Board of Trustees.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to approve the appointments, Councilman Millen.
Is there a second?
Central second.
Who is that?
Bench.
Bench is seconded, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the appointment motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Are there, is there anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business to be brought before the council at this time?
Yes.
Not, uh, Mayor Protem more.
I just want to remind everybody that I know that the weather's changing and we're all locked in our houses. But keep in mind, they are not picking up large items. A number of neighborhoods, uh, we're putting out big items. They're not picking them up yet, so please, if you can, don't sit them out because this is mating season for animals and they'll start making homes in those, in those couches and chairs. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, I do have a couple of things I want to mention. Uh, as you mostly are aware, I'm sure, uh, due to the large crowds that occurred a week ago, a week over the weekend, uh, and also in, at parks in a neighborhood, the manager closed the city parks to vehicle traffic. And the city, uh, police chief has been issuing citations, uh, under the governor's stay-home orders to those who host the gatherings, uh, to try to further decrease, uh, those kinds of gatherings. This past week, and, uh, as this weekend approached, we did issue, I did issue, a, um, proclamation, emergency proclamation and an order limiting travel on city and county roads within the city. That travel ban was good for only seven days. It could be extended by council today if it chose, chose. So I would simply ask, is there any interest in extending the city declaration of emergency and/or the travel ban to the April thirtieth date of the governor's current stay-home order? If there is none, we'll move on. I, uh, also, uh, I, I want to point out that I had, we had discussed the possibility with the manager, the city attorney, whether or not we could do a curfew, uh, order as well as Flint has done. The city attorneys, uh, 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 responded that the research suggested it would not be possible. It was preempted by state authority, so we will be unable to issue any kind of curfew, um, further at this time. Having said that, that's all I have. Again, does anybody else have anything at this time?
Mayor Clock, I have a question.
Yes, uh, that was, is that Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Um, so, and maybe for the city attorney as well. So my question is, if we're not able to move forward with a curfew and/or not able to extend the travel ban, what precautions or what steps can the city do, if any, um, during this time to assist? I mean, I read the, I've read the information and stuff, but I'm just wondering why or what can we do instead of being put in the corner or being able to do nothing?
Well, we do have the governor's order in place. The stay-home, stay-safe order does provide for certain restrictions. And you're, you're supposed to stay home unless you are going out for one of the exceptions specifically set forth by the governor. And there is an enforcement aspect to that order. And I believe, um, city police and, uh, state police have been enforcing that order if they find that people are in violation of it.
Uh, excuse me, uh,
Co, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, that, uh, that order, it's a breach of peace citation, which is, uh, five hundred dollar citation. So that citation that a homeowner or the host of a gathering is getting is an automatic five hundred dollars. So, I mean, as far as enforcement, I would say that's, uh, it's pretty good. Uh, especially if you decide you want to be that host, then expect that, that it'll fine.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Scherzer, did that answer your question?
Uh, yes and no. Uh, I just think, you know, a lot of people look at us and, um, have seen some very negative comments about how we have not taken any action. But also, um, some very misinformed, um, comments, which is normal. I just think if we can be seen as, you know, stepping up and showing that we care or, you know, um, being that we are in leadership position in the city of Saginaw, I just think, um, there has to be something that we can do to show good faith, goodwill. Like we care, we want you guys to stay home because we can say and do everything. The governor can give executive orders, but, um, I'm just, I am for, um, the, of course, because in my council communication and, um, I've expressed that the travel ban, I am for it. I would personally, uh, I shouldn't say personally, I would suggest that we extend it to the end of the, in the file of the executive order. Um, but I just don't know, um, I wanted more information to clarify whether or not it's feasible for us to do it.
Any other comments by any other council persons on the suggestion?
This is Brenda. Uh, Councilman Scherzer, Councilwoman Scherzer. A lot of this is, Flint already had stuff in place, if I'm not mistaken. Correct me, Amy, if I'm wrong. And because it doesn't just start where we come up with a curfew. It's procedures and the steps that we have to take. And then, you know, even when we do it, it's still going to be laid over for thirty days. I think that a lot of things that we've been hearing on Facebook and stuff and social media has been to the point where they're just asking, what are we doing? The question is, what can we do and how fast can we do it? With something like this, we can't do anything fast. All we can do is try to stay visual and try to assist where we can. Now, correct me, Amy, if I'm wrong. Um, people have been calling me and doing all of that, asking me, where's the mayor, what's going on? Why y'all don't do curfews? Keeping in mind, we're not like Flint. They had a whole big crisis going on way before this with the water. And so I'm not saying that it's a bad city, but I'm just saying that it's just steps that we have to take. Now, I believe that we probably can start working on some stuff once this is over, we all come together. But I think right now, I know from what the people have telling me, they just want to hear that we're saying stuff. So the commercials that were done, um, just getting on your Facebook page saying, hey, Saginaw, how you doing? Just letting people know that you're there is going to really help. Because I've been volunteering for a lot of food drives. And so people will say, why are you out there in there? It's like, you can't be a leader and don't lead. If you're not leading, then you need to think about what you're doing. So, uh, it's part of, I know you're involved in a lot of things. So I just think that, hey, you already do it. I mean, and this is just a process for us. We have to follow procedures. Amy, like I said, correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I can think I can a little bit. Um, the Flint had an ordinance in place previously that authorized Flint's mayor to issue emergency curfews. Saginaw does not have an ordinance in place that authorizes the mayor to do so. Saginaw does have a juvenile curfew in place and has for a long time. That is enforceable by our police on any juvenile who is violating that curfew. It's currently enforceable. The, the, uh, the research by our city attorney suggests that the preemption by the state of the ability to enter, to create a curfew may actually have preempted Flint's, but Flint went ahead and did it anyway. At this point, I, I don't really want to try and, and say that we should issue a curfew, um, given that the, the opinion is it would be preempted in any event. As far as the travel ban, the real question becomes, what do we need to tell our public? And I think what we need to tell our public is that if they violate the governor's stay-at-home order or if they violate, uh, the breach of the peace, as Councilmember, uh, Williams has suggested, there will be an enforcement action and there will be an enforcement action with consequences. And we need to make sure that everyone out there understands those consequences exist and can be implemented against those who are responsible. One of the things that people might not realize is if you're at a gathering, it's not likely the police officers will be able to issue citations against everybody there at that time. However, they are wearing body cameras. And those body cameras may well allow us to identify them two months, some three months down the road and issue citations then for the violation. So just because right now we're only issuing citations primarily against those who are hosting these events does not mean those who are violating does not mean those who are violating the, the stay at home orders cannot be issued citations later. So that's the message we need to be getting out there. They are in violation of a, of a state order. There are consequences if they do this, and they're, aside from the issue of, of violating the trust of the public and possibly expen- extending this, uh, the epidemic, extending the, the emergency situation, they are also subject to future, uh, citations and fines if needed. So hopefully that will be enough to, the carrot and the stick. Hopefully they will honor the re- the respect and respect those who aren't ill and will protect them from potential, uh, infection as well as understand the potential consequences if they don't do so. Okay, anybody else with any?
Yep, so as far as the travel ban, are we allowed to extend it?
The, the, there's a question whether that is preempted as well. Um, the, I believe we could, whether or not someone, and the real issue there has to do with the the county has a, uh, emergency order in place and they have an emergency management, um, uh, ordinance, uh, established already and with an emergency management manager who is, uh, who has not approved this, he has checked with the state but has not received a response yet as of this morning, whether or not there is any problem with our extension or our extending the curfew, the, excuse me, the travel ban. So the que- I do believe we could if we chose, if council wanted to pass the, an extension to the time of the governor's April thirtieth order. Council could do so. I do not know if later that might not be enforceable.
I, I do have concerns with that because there is a question as to whether or not that would be allowed by the state.
Exactly. So that's the, the point, we don't, we haven't had any definitive statement yet from the gu- from the governor's office or the emergency management office of the state saying that it would be a problem, it would be wrong. But that is the inclination that it may be if we did so.
So were we in violation for the week? Because we did that for the week, is it the violation, would we be violating it because of that or violation because of an extension?
There's concern whether the state would approve the city's ability to issue an extension because it falls under the county's emergency management plan. The coun- the city adopted the county emergency management plan, so it's not a, um, standalone entity in that regard. It, the city does not have a separate emergency management plan or separate emergency management coordinator. Everything is coordinated through the county system.
Does that answer the question, council member Scherzer?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to get to, how do we do this? Because we have to do it by a vote and I would put a motion on the floor right now, but we don't meet until, well, we can do it on Monday if we have to, but to get clarification whether or not we can extend the travel ban.
You would have to make the motion irrespective of the decision from the governor's office later. If it was seconded, council would, could discuss it further and then there would be a, a vote on the motion.
So, um, I move that we extend the travel ban through the executive order of the governor's office to April thirtieth, uh, pending or, uh, based on the information we receive, uh, from the state. Is that correct?
I believe that is sufficient for the motion, yes. Um, is there a second?
According to the county, there needs to be some sort of a resolution and a formal action that needs to
So.
Come and be sent to the state.
Madam attorney, would that require the motion to include the resol- uh, it as a resolution of council?
Well, I, I would, I would want the city clerk to weigh in on this too. Generally, when you have resolutions that are approved, you have the form language in place at the time that you're adopting a resolution. Um, so I, I, I guess I would, I would look to her for a little bit of input as well as to how a verbal resolution would be.
Madam clerk?
Yes, thank you, um, Attorney Lusk. I do wholeheartedly agree with that, that the resolution language should be written out and in front of all the council members prior to a vote and it should be in resolution format. That is your customary standard of procedure.
Then the next step probably would be the motion would need to request a resolution being prepared. Would that be correct?
I would agree with that.
Excuse me, I have a comment, Amy Forbes. Um, I'm wondering if it, if it might be possible for us to, um, communicate with the county emergency manager and request that at the county level that they consider a, um, a travel ban like we have? Maybe that would be a more appropriate way to go around this?
I, I believe that discussion's been had with the emergency management coordinator and I don't believe that, uh, the county at this time, from, from what he indicated, um, what is inclined to put those sort of, um, restrictions in place. He, hi- his interpretation of the act and, and everything that he's learned through his role as the emergency management coordinator is that, um, the real purpose of that portion of the emergency management act is to put travel restrictions in place when there's some sort of a natural disaster and traffic needs to be rerouted, things, things like that. Um, so I, I don't think the county at this point in time is, is inclined to take that direction.
Maybe the next question that would be, would the authority for the emergency manager exist to i- issue a curfew, a general curfew?
The emergency management act doesn't reference a curfew outside of, um, sorry, I'm not sure if that's in there. If, if the emergency management act does reference a curfew, it's only with regard to the governor's powers.
Alright. There is a motion on the table. We need to at least decide if there would be, it would, how to proceed. So I need to know, is, is there a second for the motion?
I have a comment, I guess, before we make that decision.
Well, we will, no, no, we, we have to know, if there's, if there's no second, the motion dies. If you wish discussion, we need a second and then we can do further discussion.
Can we repeat the motion again?
Councilmember Scherzer? Or madam clerk, did you repeat the, the motion as you have it?
I don't have it all. I was gonna ask, um, councilmember Scherzer, but, uh, she's moving to expand the travel ban that was issued by the mayor. Until April thirtieth to match the governor's order.
That's what I understood as well.
Pending the final decision authorization, whatever that word is for the state.
I believe the question was whether the state would approve us extending it.
Um, I second the motion.
Alright, it has been seconded. Now, is there discussion?
I guess my question would be, what, um, you know, could we, could we draft the language and have it ready for our meeting next week? If that would be the proper process, if we cannot move forward tonight?
I believe that would be the proper process. Uh, madam clerk, would you agree?
Yes, I would. And we could put it in the form of a resolution for adoption consideration.
Then, um, perhaps a, uh, perhaps the motion should be actually to have the, uh, resolution prepared for next week. Would that be a safe statement, madam clerk?
That would be a safer statement and a safer motion.
Um, councilmember Scherzer, would you be willing to amend your motion to?
Um, so I'd like to amend my motion to include, uh, preparing of a resolution for council meeting next Monday.
Alright.
I, I think you need a formal motion to, I think you need a motion to amend. Because you have a motion and a second on the table.
Yes.
Right, this is motion to amend.
To amend.
Right.
So I move to amend, uh, the formal motion on the table to include that a resolution will be prepared and presented for the April twenty, is it the twentieth? Yes, twentieth council meeting.
Well, and, and I just want to clarify, so the motion today would be to adopt an ex- an extension of the travel ban.
And to have a resolution.
Is that the intent or is the intent to move it to next Monday's meeting for, with a resolution to?
I have a question.
Expand that.
Alright, we are in discussion. Councilmember Williams?
Okay, to, the reason for doing this, Autumn, is this to give law enforcement more weight in enforcement? What, what, what is the, and the reason I'm asking is because the language from, in the stay at home order and also the breach of peace, uh, citation is, it's a lot of weight. I mean, there's, why are we doing this, I guess?
Councilman Millen?
Pro- proceed.
Uh, I would tend to agree with, uh, Councilman Williams. This may be simply one of those situations where we cannot have much practical effect as much as we would like to. There may come a time when we can have a more direct effect on looking like we're moving recovery forward. I think we're pretty well covered at the moment on the stay home, stay safe part. I, I think our role may, may have more to do with, uh, trying to return to regular activities than what we're doing at the moment.
This is Brenda.
Yes.
I agree. One of the things that we need to be careful of is that the governor had already issued. And just like, um, Councilman Williams said, she holds a lot of weight. Well, if we really get honest, if we extend, we're still just piggybacking on her order already. And so after the thirtieth, then what?
I, I gotta, I have to actually call, the, the, the discussion needs to be on the motion to amend at this point, not on the main motion. So, the motion to amend is whether the main motion should be amended to, uh, move the matter to next week with a prepared resolution for council's consideration and for adoption. Is that correct, madam clerk?
Well, mayor, I don't know if that's been seconded yet, so I don't know if you're ready for discussion on it.
Oh, okay, I was thinking it was.
They had a motion, but no second.
Was there a second on the motion?
I will second. This is Jamie.
Alright, it has been seconded. With that being seconded, would it be correct that that's where we are in discussion, madam clerk?
Yes, Mayor Clock, it is.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Councilman Millen? Uh, I'm a little rusty, but my memory of Robert's Rules of Order is the original, originator of a motion can amend their own motion. Autumn put forth the motion and the amendment. Not sure we need to vote separately on an amendment.
We need the interpretation of Robert's Rules of Order, madam, madam, uh, attorney.
Yes, um, you do need to, this is Clerk Santos, you do need to vote separately on the amendment and then on the main motion. Correct.
Okay, that's under our procedures.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment to the main motion? Speak, say a.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, any opposed? Okay, carried on the amendment. Now we are back to the main motion, whether to proceed with a resolution at next week's meeting, uh, with the resolution to, and extend the travel ban through April thirtieth in conjunction with the governor's, uh, existing order. Is there any further discussion on that main motion?
Yes, that's here.
Proceed.
Thank you, um, I guess I'm, I'm thinking along the lines of Councilman Williams. If this isn't facilitating, you know, a, a smoother implementation of the already existing order, um, I mean, I could see if this was done preemptively way back weeks ago, um, you know, right, right early on, but I guess I don't see the sense of extending this when it's redundant, um, and I think people, I completely think people need to comply with the governor's orders. I would have no problem supporting a resolution, you know, adopting that for ourselves if that was what, you know, what was the case, but, um, I guess I just don't see what the point of doing this is. I get that people on social media say mean things, but they're no different to me than the M live trolls. And if people bring me concerns, that's one thing, but I, I'm not, people already have enough restrictions being put on them, they're stressed, they don't need new rules or nu- new, new things put upon them that are basically the same thing that's already been implemented. Um, I, I mean, they know what's expected of them, li- by and large. A lot of the stuff doesn't make a sense on the surface, even if you think about it, you know, a lot of the, you know, restrictions do make far more sense than people realize and there's a lot of complaints about that. And I think that the best thing we can do as council members, even though it isn't the big, bold hero thing to do, is to lead by example, have a human presence, whether it's on social media or whether it's over the phone or via email, and, and, and be a solid source of reliable information. And lead by example. You know, humanize this to people. I have people who are, who are spouting all sorts of crazy nonsense. And if you have influence with them, you're gonna get further talking to them and explaining to them the real human consequences of ignoring these things. Um, you know, I, I just, I just, just don't necessarily think that, you know, putting more rules out there that really are just the same old rules, you know, is gonna serve anybody, so, uh, my vote would be no on this ultimately. That's all.
We've lost the mayor's audio.
Floyd's on mute.
Just for the purpose of clearing up, uh, understanding the main two reasons that I chose to implement the, um, the tra- the dr- the, uh, travel ban was twofold. One, because we were having a huge problem with large gatherings. And two, because I have been hearing a lot about whether or not people are obeying the governor's orders and whether a more personal, closer, uh, city, uh, order might be paid attention to. And it seemed like that did happen, but I, I, I guess at this point, um, I'm ambivalent on whether to proceed. I love having it in place because I think people did pay attention. Uh, I'm concerned about whether or not we have the authority to extend it, but I guess I'll, at this point, unless there's further comment, I will call.
And I, if, if I can, I do just want to remind everyone, um, or reiterate, because I'm not sure that, that it's fully understood, there really are no penalties for violation of the current travel restrictions. There's, you, you, we can't cite under the mayor's order. We can't issue tickets or anything like that. So even when, again, when it comes to enforcement, any enforcement that's being done is being done under the existing governor's order.
Mayor, this is Bill.
Yes.
Okay, so I've been listening to, um, everybody's conversations and, and I understand, uh, Councilwoman Scherzer's concerns and, and I, I understand her intent. But also, I think even for our citizens listening to this conversation at home right now, they can see that, you know, and I agree too, I, I, I know that we want to make it look like we're doing things and like, that we're acting and our citizens see that, but you're right, that everything that I've read and digressed and talked to people about, you're right, mayor, it did raise an awareness. And it got a conversation going where it gave you an opportunity to explain to people that it is under the Michigan Emergency Act that where this, a lot of this information is coming from and what the governor is doing. Um, and like what Amy was just saying, I, I can agree with that too, because the enforcement and also with Councilman Williams and, and Millen, you're right. It's at the governor's level where the enforcement is and where the penalties could come into place if people are not staying at home and, and adhering to the executive order. With Saginaw, it would be more of a, can I say a symbolic rule? A symbolic motion that we would do or something here. It's, it's just something that we're trying to say, hey, this is what's happening at the state level and we're still trying to raise awareness with it here. So I guess, um, that's kind of where I'm sitting with this right now. And I understand where we're trying to go with this, but I just can't really see where we would get a better benefit. Um, I think I'm gonna lean into the corner, I'm just gonna keep trying to explain to people what Governor Whitmer is trying to do to protect your safety and why, why, and why it is important. And I talked about that earlier in the meeting today, which is how fast these numbers have risen. This is, uh, this is a very serious item. And that's all I have to say right now.
You're on mute, mayor.
Anybody else? Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Can I just say that, let's remind us that this is not voting yes or no. This is simply voting to have something prepared for our next meeting. And then we can have a discussion again then. A lot has been changing in this whole, this whole scenario, and I think that a lot could change in a week. And we will have better information in a week if we have that discussion then.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, let's have a vote on the motion. Has everyone understand the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye.
No.
Madam Clerk, we will need a roll call, please.
Mayor Proten, more?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Millen?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash?
Uh, for more conversation, I'll say yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
And Mayor Clark?
I think that's what it comes down to. I am going to have a conversation, I'll say yes, and we'll see you next week. Is there any other business to come before council?
Yeah, yes, I have, I'm sorry, I have Bench here.
All right, proceed.
Bench?
Councilmember Bench, yes.
Okay, all right, sorry. Just to be clear, when does the travel ban expire exactly?
On the, uh,
Seven days, what is the seven today?
Issued on the ninth, so it expires on the sixteenth.
I believe it expires 6:00 AM on the fifteenth.
That is correct.
On, yeah.
On the fifteenth, and what is the date of our next meeting?
Twenty, April twentieth.
So it's gonna be expired for four days, just to clarify?
Looks that way.
That would be correct.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure, I was, okay, all right, you go, I'll hand.
Anybody else have anything else to bring before the council at this time?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, yeah, Councilmember Oystash.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to let people know, and I kind of missed out on council input, is there's been a lot of need in the city. And I've spoke to quite a few folks that are just having a problem with employment. That's been a big factor. Another one's been food and groceries, because people are now not working or unemployed or trying to get unemployment. I just want to tell people to don't give up. The systems are being taxed like they've never been taxed before. A lot of people are trying to apply. If you're having any kind of problems, if I've seen you on Facebook, I've tried to get you in contact with somebody that can help you. Vanessa Guerrero and Ken Horn, your state representatives, go to their Facebook pages. A lot of good information. There's been some changes that have made, that they've been making with the unemployment system to try and help get you through the process. And so I just wanted to put that out there for our citizens too, because I think that's really important. And I did have one thing here, I had to sign a photograph. There is a food distribution going on this week. That's gonna be through Samaritas. And it's gonna be Wednesday, the fifteenth, 10:00 AM, 2110 Brockway. And if you need more information or you want to volunteer, please get ahold of Nancy Scott, Thank you.
Anybody else? I do have one final thing, the Michigan,
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to go back to the resolution that was passed, or the, the, the motion that was passed. So what council is directing is a resolution to extend the restriction on travel?
That's what I understand.
And you would like the city attorney or the city clerk or me to draft that resolution?
To prepare the resolution for council consideration, yes.
Even if it's determined that we are notified by the state of Michigan that, that it would not be illegal action, council wants us to, to proceed with that?
I guess what I would do is ask you as manager to convey that to the council. Councilmembers, if that is what is received, because there is a request into the governor's office for a response on the extension. If the governor, governor's office comes back and says it would not be proper, would it be acceptable for the manager to simply inform us of that and not have a resolution prepared for next meeting?
Um, Mayor Clark, my motion indicated this is pending the decision from the state.
You did say that, yes.
Yes, you did. I have it in the motion.
Very good. So, Mr. Manager, I think that would be the proper recourse. If there is a director from the state that it would be inappropriate to extend this under any, under the state requirements, then I think you need to notify us of that, and there will not be a resolution prepared. If we do not receive, if we do not receive that, and I believe council's motion requires, requests you to have a resolution prepared for next council meeting or consideration. Any other?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I understand that, I guess. And I guess I kind of missed that on the initial motion. I, initially, when we were talking about this idea of reservations, given the legal opinion that we received from the city attorney and the comments by the county emergency management director, given that the city council did adopt the county emergency managers' management plan. So that was why we did not do that. And I still have those same reservations. But if that is what council is asking for, I guess that's how we'll have to proceed. I agree with several council members and the city attorney that we have all the authority that we need, given the governor's order. That is what our police department is currently enforcing, and that is what we would continue to enforce regardless of any local travel ban. So I think that, that covers everything. But we'll prepare something that's directed so that you can have additional conversation next week, pending any response from the state.
Thank you. I was gonna add on something else. The Michigan, the mayor's, Michigan Mayor's League has asked, and the municipal league has asked, that cities representatives contact their congresspersons about a supplemental appropriations bill to ask to provide funding, potential for funding directly to smaller communities under 500,000 in size. Right now, the CARES Act limits the direct funding to, to that 500,000 population limit. So they are asking, they're seeking to get an amendment through as a supplemental appropriation, allowing those funds to come right to smaller cities. And it would be very helpful to Saginaw if that did happen. So if you can, contact your congressperson and ask that they support a supplemental appropriations bill that would allow distribution of funds directly to smaller cities. Any comment on that or questions? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is what, a move.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Thank you, everybody, all in favor.
Aye.
Any other? Thanks for the meeting, we appreciate it. We'll see all of you next week.